Good evening, welcome to those of you who are here with us in the auditorium and for those of you who are out there watching us on our telecast. I'd like to call our meeting to order and we'll have our roll call.
How do you tell they're on?
It wasn't on. Electronics, just bear with us a minute. We will stand and have our invitation and pledge by Mr. McGlong and Ms. Huggins.
Father God would come first of all to give you thank, thank you for your life, health, and strength. Et tu de God that come into this meeting, have us make the decision that will be pleasing to thee. In thy holy name we pray. Amen.
Amen.
Please face the flag.
Our allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in all. And instead of doing our public hearings right now, we're going to make our presentations for the Eagle Scouts so they won't have to sit through that part, we'll move that forward. So if, we'll go down?
Do you want to do the privilege agenda first with that flipping, flipping those two items? Number five.
Move to flip the, well, we've got to get the agenda approved too. Okay, move to approve the agenda. Okay, let's vote please on the approval of the agenda. Okay, and do what then?
No, we'll do what you said, do the Eagle Scouts first.
Yeah. Okay. I thought that was what we decided. Yes, please.
Tonight, once again, we'd like to honor and recognize several young men in our community in Pitt County who have achieved the Eagle Scout Award within the organization of the Boy Scouts of America, and we have a certificate here for you that will briefly describe your project. As we call your name, if you come up with family, friends, Scott Master, whoever you have brought tonight, we'll recognize you. So our first young man is Joseph McCarthy, if he's here? Maybe not yet.
Is he not here? Okay, maybe he'll come back.
Okay, next, we have Kennedy David Monroe Tate, if he'll come forward.
That sounds like the name of the future President of the United States. If you'll step over this way, we'll give you the, and then we'll.
Thank you.
Okay, if you'll read that.
Okay, present it to the viewing audience first, what we read here. Certificate of appreciation is awarded to Kennedy David Monroe Tate for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he renovated and refurbished a fourth grade classroom at the Third Street School, and this is recognized and presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners on the nineteenth day of August 2019, signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward and presented by the Chairman.
Thank you. And from those of us who have had Eagle Scouts in our families, we know the job you 've done and you too, so congratulations. Would you like to say something? You don't have to. Just wanted to give you the opportunity. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Okay, next, Landon Allen Stocks, if you'll come forward. Anybody you'd like to have join you? Anybody, if you'd like to have join you, can I come forward? Okay. We have somebody taking pictures?
We need to call them.
Certificate of appreciation is awarded to Landon Allen Stocks for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he constructed, transported, and installed a sports equipment barn for a local organization. Again, this is presented by the Pitt County Board of Commissioners today, the nineteenth day of August, and signed by our Chairman Beth B. Ward.
Thank you. Congratulations, good job. Thank you personally. Thank you.
All right, I believe our, Joseph McCarthy, I don't believe he has came in yet, so.
Do you want to let us read it anyway?
Sure, we can do that.
That would be nice.
Okay, for the certificate of appreciation, again, awarded to Joseph McCarthy for achieving the Eagle Scout Award. For his project, he painted the entire preschool department of Jarvis Church.
Great projects.
Yeah. Okay. Next, we have on the agenda, I think, a presentation maybe to the, yes, do you want to do the presentation to?
Yeah, we can do that.
Okay, if we can ask Karen Enos to come forward, and again, with any family, friends, coworkers, whoever you choose to bring with you.
Come on.
And if we can ask the board to, I think there's action as need on that item or not.
Do we need, okay.
A motion and a second?
A motion. And a second? Okay, and let's vote. Melvin, will you vote for me, please?
Okay.
Thank you.
Hello.
Hi.
All right, so we have a resolution prepared, and Madam Chairman, if you'd like me to go ahead and read?
Please.
Okay. Resolution honoring Karen W. Enos for her years of service with Pitt County Government. Whereas almost, after almost thirty-two years of service, Karen Enos retired July 1st, 2019, from the Pitt County Registered Deeds. And where Karen Enos was hired August 24th, 1987, the position of Deputy Two was promoted to Deputy Three Registered Deeds in 1990, promoted to Deputy Registered Deeds Four Vital Records in 1993, promoted to Chief Deputy Registered Deeds Real Estate in 2009, then promoted to Deputy Registered Deeds Four in 2012, and promoted to Chief Deputy of Deeds Vital Records in 2015. And whereas Karen W. Enos has faithfully served the citizens of Pitt County for exactly thirty-one years and eleven months, whereas Karen displayed the highest degree of professionalism as shown through her honesty, commitment, and loyalty, where Karen is respected by her coworkers and the citizens of Pitt County whom she has served through the years, where she has actively served on the Pitt County Safety Committee and the United Way Committee for several years, and whereas the citizens of Pitt County have been well-served by Karen W. Enos. Therefore, it be resolved that the Pitt County Board of Commissioners does hereby express its gratitude and thanks to Karen W. Enos for her career of dedicated and exemplary service to the people of Pitt County and honors her with this resolution of appreciation given under the hand, our hand and seal of Pitt County, adopted August 19th, 2019, signed by the Chairman Beth B. Ward, Lieutenant Clerk Kimberly W. Hines.
Do you like the same one?
I miss y'all so much, I'll come back four times.
I'm sure they'll take you.
Oh, I am.
Oh, you're already?
They should miss me really, really bad.
Smart girl.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Okay, yeah. We're good.
Okay, Mr. Kroom, if you'll come forward. You're gonna have a busy year coming up, right?
Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager, it's good to be with y'all tonight. Tonight, we're proceeding on to the, to the next step of the, to the adoption of Schedule of Values, and tonight is Part Two of the step. On August 5th, we introduced the Schedule of Values or brought them to the Commissioners for consideration. Tonight's Part Two is the public hearing, and it's my recommendation that we open the public hearing up for public comments, for anybody who wishes to speak on to, I mean, speak to the, to the Schedule of Values, standards of rules, any kind of information that we can get from the community back, we'd be glad to hear from them.
Okay, then we'll declare the public hearing open. We don't have anyone signed up.
No.
Is there anyone who's here that didn't get an opportunity to sign up, who would like to speak? Okay, then we'll close the public hearing and you can proceed on.
Okay.
If there's anything else you want to, if you want to close, that's it.
The last thing is, this is in preparation for the schedule for the September 9th meeting where we will actually vote on the Schedule of Values that we'll be using for the 2020 reappraisal.
Okay.
And that is it. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much. Next, we have our public address to the board, and we have one person signed up.
Yes, Ella Little will come forward, please, to the podium, and if you'll just tell us your name and address, and if the county attorney will read our statement on public addresses while she comes forward.
Yes, Pitt County welcomes comments on all matters of public concern. When you come to the podium, please state your name and address, and I'll keep your time at three minutes per speaker.
You can come right to the mic, right there. Right there. Yes, ma'am, right at that podium. And you can kind of pull the mic down just a little bit.
Okay.
There you go, perfect, thank you.
Thank you so very much. My name is Ella Little, from Bethel. I graduated from Bethel High School and under Professor Carroway, and when I was eighteen. And now I'm ninety-three, and God has been good to me, and I've lived in Bethel and around the area. I wanted to go to college, but my daddy said, "Well, there're too many of you, so I can't send one and not the others." So he said, "You have to work your way." So I went for two years in Elizabeth City. I didn't have the money to go there, so I left and went to Washington, D.C., where I went to a school there of others, to learn to work with the Madame C.J. Walker, the first black millionaire who worked in here. I worked there for a while, then I came back to Bethel after a few years to take care of my mother and daddy who lived there. They were getting old. So now I'm old and ninety-three, but Bethel is not getting any better, and I'm getting older, so I had to come somewhere else for some help. The water tanks has been there ever since I was there. About three years ago, they were two, one they called Black Side and one the White Side. And they took the one down from on the Black Side. I asked them, I said, "Why are you taking it down from over this side? Are you gonna take both of them down on the other side? No, they're not gonna take them." I said, "Well, why are you taking this one down? There's nothing wrong with that one." So they took it down anyway. Now, I'm getting sick from that, from what the, the water is coming from here now, from over Greenville after then, and now my water that I get, it is salty, they call it, the rough salt is coming in it. When I even wash my clothes, my bed linen, the clothes that I wear are rough, and I've been telling them about it, and I have been trying to hire somebody with the little change that I get to, or pay somebody to come there to fix my water. They can't fix it either. They say they don't do that. So now, that's the way that I got to live there in Bethel, and I am sick of it. And I think, they say, if I came over here, somebody, somebody might have to say something to Bethel, it doesn't make sense. They didn't take the one down on the White Side, so that looked like to me is mighty funny, won't nothing wrong with either one when they, when they took that one down. So why did they take, I would like to know, why did they take that one down? And, and I'm getting, and I get sick from it. I have, I never been sick in my life to go to the hospital, and I'm going to the hospital now because of this, and then sometime, I live alone. I don't live alone, no, Jesus is there with me, and that's who I live with. And, but, but one thing about it, he, and his word encourages me, and I got a right, that's why I'm here tonight. I got a right to speak for myself. As long as I can speak, I'm gonna be speaking. And I came over here to find out, can, is there anybody, anybody over here that could say something about that? They took down one, and why not the other? And then you got to pay twenty, a dollar and a quarter if you're late paying your water If I don't get down there timing before the time run out, I got to pay a dollar and quarter add to it.
Could I, we have, our time is up, but we gave you some extra time, and we appreciate you coming to talk with us. The, I was trying to check with the manager as to how we can direct you to get some help and who you could talk to, because it is GUC, Greenville Utilities, that, you know, that is bringing the water to Bethel now, so.
So, yes, I was thinking maybe.
It's just that water over there on the Black Side.
Okay.
Our county engineer, Tim.
I want everybody to have good water.
Yes, ma'am.
Our county engineer, Tim Corley, maybe can intercede and call GUC and get some answers for you, or connect you with the appropriate person at GUC. GUC does constant water testing of their lines and stuff, there might be some, some tests that could be done, or they have done, they could tell you about, and I did, I did notice that Mayor Brown walked in the room while Miss Little was speaking, I don't know if there was, just want to acknowledge her presence.
Yes. I think that what, what we'll do is, I don't know what's the best way, if, if we could get maybe Mr. Corley to go there, maybe to see her?
Yes.
In Bethel and talk with you? If you can leave your address or number or whatever.
Okay, and not a whole lot I can do about it, but.
No, 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 but so you could share with him, and so he could check, and he can help connect you with someone who can help, maybe.
Madam Chairman, Spencer suggested that Tim Corley stand up so Miss Little can see her, otherwise she won't let her.
He'll walk out with you and get your information. This gentleman right there that just stood up.
Okay.
And you all can, you all can make a date.
He'd be able to tell it, huh?
Yes, ma'am. Yes, ma'am. Thank you so much for coming, and I hope I can walk that straight when I'm your age. Okay, next, we have our items for report, and Mr. Kroom, our tax collection report.
Good evening, again, Commissioners, Madam Chair, Commissioners, Mr. Manager. The July 2019 Tax Collection Report. The Pitt County Combined Collection Rate for Real and Personal Property Taxes for the fiscal year 2019, 2020 is 7.39 percent. This time, one year ago, was 8.11 percent. We continue to use all remedies to collect taxes, of course, this is our current taxes that are not delinquent, and it is my recommendation that you approve the report as presented.
Okay. A motion and a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second to approve the report. If we'll vote, please. Okay, thank you very much. Good report, again. Okay, next, Brian?
Good evening, Madam Chair, Board of Commissioners. We're one month in the books, so we are at the 8.3% for this fiscal year. What you have in front of you is a new and improved report of our monthly financials. I have asked the manager, seeing that I've been there almost a year and a half, I felt that it was important for you all to also get a look at our solid waste fund. So from here on out, the monthly financial report will include our general fund, which is our main operating fund, and our solid waste fund, which is our enterprise fund. The general fund, for the first month, we've collected 4.1% of budgeted revenues, and we have spent 8.4%. The 8.4% is slightly higher than we were at this point last year due to the acquisition of the Warren Farm property that we purchased at the beginning of the fiscal year in July. On the solid waste side, we have collected 6.51%, and we have spent 4.23% of our anticipated budget. If you have any questions, I'll be glad to answer.
Okay. Any questions, comments?
Motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve and a second. If we'll vote, please. Brian, thank you very much. Okay, now Scott, manager's report.
Yes, ma'am, the next items is, your next meeting dates in September will be the second and fourth Mondays of the month compared to the first and third due to the Labor Day weekend and the first Monday. Those will begin at nine and six P.M. expectantly. Just remind the board, the upcoming NCCC, North Carolina Association of County Commissioners Conference, is this week in Guilford County. Have a good night news item on the Woodmore Farm Road Paving Project. As you recall, the first Woodmore project was a much smaller project that we did first, and that's been completed. We're in year two of the actual assessment and collections on the, the assessments for that paving project. This Woodmore Farm is a much larger area adjacent to Woodmore that is now complete and is, I believe, has met all the specifications, requirements of DOT. We'll have several steps to do, as a board will need to follow through with, with a preliminary assessment role, a final assessment role, some public hearings and such, but just want to let you know the project is complete, and once all this, all the steps are completed, the property owners in the area would begin to be receiving a tax or assessment beginning in July of 2020. So, and then for ten years, they're out, and then that'll rebuild the, the monies that were put out for this project, so that's.
Scott, could I ask you a question?
Yes, sir.
Was it worked out to where people that were in a position to pay off the full amount could pay it off without having to pay interest?
My, yes, this tax administrator is saying yes.
All right, cool. Thanks.
Item D, as was announced at the last board meeting concerning a workshop for the Board of Commissioners, we are working furiously to try to nail down a date to accommodate all the Commissioners, accommodate a possible outside facilitator, and I guess the good news is, we do have in front of you a proposed agenda, it's a draft at this point in time of the topics that would be on that agenda for the workshop, but we, if we're going back to the drawing board, maybe for a third time on the finding a set of dates that we can get everybody to work out with everybody's schedules and to accomplish this, but, so that's kind of still to be determined in terms of the date and the time. That's all I have on my report. We do have a special report from the Pitt County Industrial Development Commission, the Chairman Randy Walters.
Yes, Randy, if you'll come forward and make an announcement and kind of identify yourself, your position, and who you represent.
I'm Randy Walters, Chair of Pitt County Development Commission Board. I live in Farmville, and a native of Pitt County and proud of it. I have a very special announcement, and a monumental one for me. Our board unanimously approved today the hiring of a new executive director for the Pitt County Development Commission. The gentleman's name is Scott Darnell. He is coming from Paducah, Kentucky, as we speak, and I'll go into that a little bit in, in just a few minutes. He's a graduate of Garner Webb University, the University of West Georgia. He has done multi-county economic groups and chaired, and been very successful in his economic development programs. He's done this in several southern states. We feel very fortunate to have him coming to Pitt County. His wife is an ECU graduate, they have an eleven-year-old daughter, and I think one of the nicest things this gentleman said was, they chose Pitt County as a place they would like to rear their daughter. And I thought that he has opportunities to go elsewhere, and I was very impressed with the fact that they felt that strongly about the quality of life in Pitt County. He is supposed to be here with me, I am fixing to introduce somebody who is not here, but supposedly his plane touched down about five minutes ago, so you still may meet him before the night's over, or I may just take him to dinner, I'm not sure which. We interviewed a number of candidates.
That's okay, we're just trying to see if we need to pass something out, I think, relative to this.
Yes, there is, I thought it was, I thought it was at your desk. I'm sorry, I apologize.
Yes, no, 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 that's not.
Copy of his resume.
That's not true.
It's a copy of his resume, which I would like for each of you to have. Like I said, I'm very pleased with our choice, and like I said, our board voted unanimously to accept our recommendation. We hope he will be moving to Pitt County, hopefully within the next few months. He's, he's very anxious, like I said, they have an eleven-year-old daughter that'd like to get into school, so I think he would like, very anxious, he is very anxious to come as quickly as he possibly can. Look forward to you meeting him, I think you'll be very impressed with him.
We also have a press release prepared for the media, for the newspaper, and that you can get tonight, and.
Yes, I've already done, I've already did that right before the meeting started.
Yes, and for, for the Daily Reflector and the other, we'll be putting this out via email to all of our contacts, so that all the outlets have this as well.
Great. Thank you all very much.
Thank you, Paul, your work on this, Randy.
Thank you.
It's not been easy. Understand. Okay, is that it, sir?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Alan, entertain a motion to approve the items for consent on the agenda.
Some move.
Okay, let's vote on that, please.
I was already voting, yeah.
Okay. Our next item is the budget amendment for the Pitt County Employment of People with Disabilities. Brian, if you'll come forward. This is page thirty-three for us.
Good evening, again, I have brought forward to you a budget amendment for the Pitt County Employment of People with Disabilities Committee. This is a committee that you all include in our annual budget. We have budgeted historically nine hundred dollars a year for this committee. They help folks with disabilities look for jobs and apply for jobs. Historically, this committee we have paid directly to, and it's come to my attention that that funding should actually flow directly through the county. So this budget amendment allows us to, from a procedural standpoint, take the money from their old account and combine it with the money that we have in the budget this year. That money will flow through social services, and this way we will have direct oversight over their spending and operations. So I asked for this budget amendment so that we can officially accept the money from their checking account, bring it into the county's depository, and then all their money will flow directly through the county.
Okay.
I'll make a motion.
Need a motion? Thank you, Lauren, let's make the motion, and we've got a second for Mike, if you'll vote, please.
I think I got the same problem as last one.
They intentionally give you that one time every time. There we go.
Is that?
Is that how you intended to vote? Yes.
Okay. Okay, it's approved.
Nine millimeter danger.
Okay. Okay. Our next item are the appointments and reappointments to the Pitt County Planning Board. Mr. Manager?
Yes, Madam Chairman, we have both appointments and reappointments to planning board. We have Johnny Penner from District A. His term is expired, and he's not eligible for reappointment. And we have Brad Guth representing District Six. His term is expiring, and he is eligible for reappointment. So need a motion to reappoint Brad Guth and then decide how you want to deal with District Six as to whether accepting a candidate who's in your list of candidates or to readvertise.
Okay. A motion?
I'm sorry. District A.
A.
Yeah. District A is Johnny Penner. Brad Guth was representing District Six. I got that mixed up.
We'll entertain a motion.
I make a motion to reappoint Brad Guth.
Okay.
Second.
Okay, with a second. Let's vote on that, please.
It is still hung up on. It's a good thing I'm going to vote, yes.
If you intend to change your vote other than what's reflected, just say so, and we'll note it.
I'm going to turn it off.
Okay. I don't think we have a reappointment name for District A, so we'll put that on the agenda for our next meeting.
Miss?
Yes.
Was that letter Ms. Namy Buck? Is that not? Okay.
That's the one I want. We will delay it till next time.
Yes. Okay. And our next item is going into closed session.
Yes, it has been suggested that this board go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143318.11A5 to discuss material terms relative to the acquisition of real property under 143318.11A1 to review confidential information in the closed session minutes and under 143318.11A6 to discuss a personnel matter.
Mr. Corley, you all can go in that first little room to your right. Oh, okay. Okay.
Move, go in closer.
She needs to go.
You'll need a motion.
So moved.
Motion to, I do.
Okay, and a second? All right, and then you'll just need to vote.
Let's vote, please.
I turned it off, and I turned.
I think we're, we are, we're back in open session. We have some minutes for approval.
Yes, I would like to make a motion to approve the minutes from our July 8th and August 9th closed session meeting.
Second.
All right. All in favor, let's vote. Okay, thank you. Passed. And we will hear from any commissioner comments. We'll start with you, Mr. Coulson.
No comments.
Okay. Chris?
Yes, Madam Chair, I'd like to thank the entire Pitt County Board of the Economic Development Board, in particular Randy Walters, for a really great effort in the hiring of our new economic developer. Really excited.
Good. Okay.
I'd like to encourage the residents of District Two to please search the online site and look for boards and commission that you might like to participate with. And keep on picking up the trash. Thank you.
Alex?
No comment.
It's looking good.
Although he's not here with us right now, I would like to welcome Scott Darnell as our new economic director for Pitt County. We're excited to have you on board.
Okay, thank you. And I have no comment, but we will, I'll call, the meeting ended, but we will wait, or should we recess?
I think we're going to recess, aren't we?
Shall we recess? Okay.
If you recess, we'll still be here.
Okay. A motion for, for.
You can just say recess.
Okay, I can just say we will recess until our new person gets here.
Correct.
And you all can go take a break and just don't go too far because they're on their way. We are coming back and to finish up our meeting. Our new hire is here. He's had some employment weather in arriving, but we are delighted to have you, and we're turning this over to you to introduce him for us, please.
Thank you very much. As earlier in this program, in case you missed that, I'm Randy Walters. I chair the Pitt County Development Commission Board. We voted unanimously today to approve the hire of a new executive director, and we've been waiting for his arrival, and he's certainly the better part of this program. And he is now here, and I would like to introduce you to Scott Darnell. Scott, if you'd like.
Scott, welcome.
Thank you, thank you. And I apologize, Nashville's a fast-growing city, and because of that, they're, they're learning that their airport gets backed up like Atlanta and Charlotte. And I experienced Charlotte and Nashville on the same day, but we'll get that passed, that behind us. You know, a few things is, is first the Development Commission. I wasn't able to attend the four o'clock meeting, obviously, but, you know, the ones I have met, look forward to meeting the rest of them. You know, I like the Development Commission's structure. It's really performed well over the years. I like the fact that the stability of the staff, that's a tremendous opportunity, I think, to come into such a well-diverse staff that's done well over the years, as well as a community, a county, and cities that has tremendous opportunity moving forward. You know, when I speak about the economy, think of it in terms of continuous improvement. No matter how well we do, we owe it, I think, to taxpayers and all our partners to always try to improve and do better. There's no difference between the public and private sector there. You know, a little bit about my background. I sort of got into this right out of college. I've been blessed to work for states, regions, and communities, and a lot of great mentors along the way that said, you know, face the tough challenges, fail, succeed, but take, always take those lessons to the next opportunity to do it better. That's taken me to three different states. This will be my fourth community, and knock on wood, it's going to be my last community. So we're excited about that. You know, I have a daughter. She's 11 years old. She's going to the sixth grade. The funny irony is her mascot at her school is pirates.
Oh, wow.
And my wife is an ECU alumnus. She did her internship in nursing, I think, in this building, Pitt County Memorial Hospital. I told her it's changed a little bit since then. But we told our daughter, you know, she said, "We're moving." She said, "Where?" And my wife said, "Well, there's a bunch of pirates there." She said, "Oh, my gosh, we're moving to the beach finally." Different types of pirates.
But closer.
Closer, yes. There's advantages there. You know, my background's diverse, and I think there's a strength in that. The, the way you grow jobs in communities are three typical ways. You recruit them, you retain them through your retention and expansion efforts, or you can grow them through small business. The great thing is there's tremendous opportunities in this community to do all three of them. From a recruitment standpoint, definitely the assets are here. If you looked at tens of thousands of communities out there all wanting opportunity, you start putting universities like ECU, community colleges like Pitt Community College, engineering schools. That pool gets very small after that. We either outspend them or we outsmart them. There's no reason communities like this can't outsmart their competition and use those assets to have a tremendous advantage competitively. You know, the other thing from an economic standpoint, I always like to define economic development. I don't see it as any different than economics. It's the allocation of scarce resources given certain restrictions in order to maximize needs and wants. Economies have needs and wants. Governments need revenue. Citizens need the opportunity to grow, prosper, gain great employment. Communities need diverse activities, assets related to that. So the needs and wants is a good way to approach it. I think the color aspect of economic development, if you look in the beautiful sky, the Carolina sky we look forward to getting back to, it's to make a county the best it can be and all citizens prosper. The black and white aspect is the management, the organizations, the legal structures. They don't create jobs. They don't create opportunities. They give us the ability to use the resources in the public and private sector to affect change, to affect opportunity. And I like to keep those two separate. Somebody pointed out to me recently, there's a difference between management and leadership. Management is managing the organizations. Leadership is doing what's the best thing for this community moving forward. And that's why I'm here today. This wasn't just a career for me. It was a career for my wife. She's employed in the great opportunity of the clinical trial industry. She'll be working from here, you know, but as well as our daughter. We want her to start in a community, end in a community, start high school, find the right church, find the right balance. In this community, we are confident that the right place to do it. So we're blessed and humbled to be here, and we look forward to moving forward. One last note is there's been a tremendous amount of research done by me looking at this position. I had two outside analytic firms running numbers ever since I applied. So I know a lot about your economy. There's a lot of tremendous things, and there's things we're going to have to work on. And I would say that in 50 states and thousands of communities that I would go before is no one's perfect. But again, it's continuous improvement. The other thing is this commission. You know, I've watched a lot of your meetings. I think sometime I was 16 or 15 watching you sometimes going through these. But what I liked about it is the diversity of this group. You don't always vote unanimously. You have good debate. But in the end, I think you honestly make the best decisions for your electorate and represent your districts. And that's good government, and that's something I want to work with. And, you know, the last thing is visiting here. Your staff's been tremendous, from Florida Hardy to Scott Elliott to all the others that have helped with the logistics. One of the things your engineers, as well as your planner said, they both raved about how much they liked working with Scott Elliott. And any county manager that can stay 18 years and enroll working with the diversity of a group like that says something about the leadership and the ability to find common ground and move the community forward. So it checked all the boxes personally and professionally. But I look forward to getting here. I look forward to working with the great staff in place. Look forward to listening, of course, and finding ways to move this county forward and make sure every citizen of Pitt County prospers and moves forward. That's why I'm here. And again, thank you for the opportunity.
Thank you so much, and we're happy that you made it.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you. Thank you. I'll entertain a motion for adjournment. You found a motion, a second?
Second.
Second? All in favor? There we go.